It is time to call to order the November meeting for the Clayton Planning Board. And I think the first thing we need to do is have a roll call. Take care of that for me?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Chair and members of the board. Do a roll call here. James Moore, the Chair, is excused, as well as James Lipscomb, he's excused. So, starting with Vice Chair, Acting as Chair Jody Dupree.
Present.
Mr. Ronald Williams. Board Member Lee. Board Member Applewhite. Board Member Saraski. Board Member Bland.
Here.
Board Member Gleason.
Here.
And Board Member Spence is alternate. Oh, thank you, sir. So we do have a quorum, sir?
All right, good deal. We have a quorum. All right, this time, let's do our pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, next on the agenda, item two is adjustment of the agenda. Are there any adjustments the agenda needs at this time?
There are no adjustments to the agenda.
All right, hearing none. If there are none, we'll move on to item three, approval of the minutes from October 2024. You had a chance to read over the minutes from last month.
Chair Dupree, this is a matter of the minutes will be presented from October's meeting at your December meeting.
Okay, so we don't need to approve them tonight?
Yes, sir.
All right, let me see what's next. Item four is public meetings. And first up on the list tonight is the Unified Development Ordinance Text Amendment. Planning Director Amido presenting, and I guess Chad Meadows may be joining us.
Good evening, Chair Dupree and members of the board. So Chad Meadows does have a conflict tonight. So he's been kind enough to prepare a PowerPoint for me to run through for you all. We were able to provide that to the board as one of your agenda packets also. Hopefully, that helps kind of synthesize all the information that you have. So this is our third round of U D O text amendments. We do consider this a living document, and this is our third round in the first year of adoption. So very pleased with your recommendations. That council has been supportive. We've taken forth 65 changes. They're organized into 11 different groups. What this would represent here is the kind of final final update that's responsive to some of the public comment that was given to us last fall. So the second round of text amendments was a big group of public comments. This third one here represents that as well, including some additional recommended text changes or considerations that were given to staff by the development community as well regarding steep slopes. So this round here is going to encompass a lot of information. We'll see how subsequent text amendments come down the road. There are going to be so many. But I just want to say that any forthcoming ones are still going to be representative of staff lessons learned. But I just want to say that we have really responded to, it's taken us about a year to get those original public comments taken care of. So we'll go ahead and jump into this. The resource conservation area. The applicant, this is an applicant requested amendment. It was suggested that there would be a two to one ratio for the square footage, but staff is thinking that it'd be a three square foot. There are some conversions to be remained disturbed, not to have this areas credited towards open space. This language here was brought in from the U D C. It was a requirement of having steep slopes conserved. There's a lot of language in here, but this is an attempt for us to have this further articulated in the U D O. Number two is open space set asides. What we've done is we've established some consistency, some uniformity, if you will, where we're creating this percentage of set aside open space area in our districts to be somewhat consistent. This other tree protection area is, we've decided to reposition where tree protections is going to be found in the U D O. So we're removing the tree canopy retention requirements. Relocating a lot of this language in other parts of the code to help it be a little bit more easier to administer. And to clarify some of the prohibitions of invasive species, for instance, the tree height measurements. A lot of technical clarifications. This was more of a staff initiated and with our consultant Chad to help us resolve around this issue right here, this topic. Use standards. This right here, we had medium manufacturing as a use, but did not have use specific standards. So if you can recall, in our U D O, you have use standards for all the different uses. So we've taken some action here to be proactive with regards to manufacturing uses. We have manufacturing heavy, we have manufacturing light, and we've articulated some of the medium manufacturing. This is somewhat resulting of some discussions staff has had with some industrial types of buildings and processes that we've been discussing with folks. So we wanted to make sure that our U D O captured some of the most recent results from those conversations. So you have principal uses, and then you have secondary uses. Secondary uses have, are like detached sheds and garages. So we've added a secondary use of refuse and recycling containers. So in our site plan reviews, we're often getting questions of where does the garbage disposal? Where can you put that on the site? What are some other requirements for that? So we've added that into this table. We've done some changes or clarification on the setbacks for some of these uses. I think what I'd really like to bring your attention is the zoning compliance permit. This changes helps us further understand what secondary uses are not required to have a zoning compliance permit, which would include the ham radio, a bus shelter, a flagpole, play equipment, for example. So somebody who wants to put a playground in their front yard, or not their front yard, but in their backyard, doesn't have to come to the town to get a zoning compliance permit. So the other change is home occupations. We have two levels. We have a level one, which would require a zoning compliance permit. We've changed the level two from being a special use permit, which would go to the Board of Adjustment, to be a conditional zoning residential, and that would go to council. So it's a little more of an intense use of a home to be a business.
Okay, that's a quick question about the last one. Can you go back real quick? So the added secondary use type is refuse or recycling container? That's a new use?
That is a new secondary use.
Or do we give a definition of what that means?
Let me check and see. Let me see. I do have the PDF here.
I would imagine that's of a certain size, refuse or recycling container? I just want to make sure we do that so we don't get confused with residential refuse or recycling containers. That's all.
Correct. It looks like we don't have a definition of what that is in our definition tables, but we can make sure that there's a note that we might be able to add that in as a consideration for council. Yeah, the idea is that it not be, it would be something for multifamily developments or commercial projects.
It makes sense. I just want to make sure that we define it's not for single family residential. And we specify what that is because that could confuse people, or someone could see it as a loophole for something else.
That's a good point. Thank you. Again, you've got principal uses, secondary uses, and now temporary uses. They're not meant to be in place permanently. Sometimes that can be a little bit confusing, but a good example is with our clarification with regards to temporary offices. So we've added some language here to clarify construction trailer offices versus, you know, if someone has a model home and they're going to convert that into a single family residence, we just wanted to have some clarification with regard to these types of temporary uses that wasn't in the code. The other one that's kind of, I would say more of a staff initiated, especially considering the hurricane damage that we all shared together in the eastern part of the state was this wireless facilities. So having the opportunity for us to enable an emergency cellular service type of use across all zoning districts with an opportunity for up to two years, four separate six-month approvals. So this would allow a cell phone carrier to come in and set up an emergency-related temporary cell service. It wouldn't be a permanent facility that would still require separate approvals. This is really just for a temporary use.
So are you, this is another one where it might need a definition because you say on one of them, it's temporary office must be removed within 30 days after the issuance of a C O. And then the other one is construction office must be removed prior to a C O. So there is a distinction between a temporary office and a construction office?
I want to say that our temporary office has the different distinctions of real estate office, model home sales office, construction trailer office, that are both under the umbrella of a temporary office.
Okay, so I just want to make sure people read that correctly because someone could read one and not the other and think that they have 30 days after getting a C O, but if it's a construction office, they don't. So I would be maybe clarify, I don't know, maybe on table 464, separate real estate office and construction office. And that way, the real estate office can be 30 days after the C O, and the construction office could be 30. Unless the intent of this was for the construction office to also be removed 30 days from the C O, which I think is actually more fair than moving it prior to a C O. So I would actually take, if I was in charge of this, I'll just make this point. I would just remove to H2C. So I would remove the 2C under the C under construction office or use 30 days as it says in the 464.
So to mimic the event of a temporary office or the construction office, I think, let me comment on this a little bit. So from an administrative point, I think we would, we wouldn't be able to, and it would become a code violation if we've issued the C O. And let's say someone has a construction office on their site for another 45 days. So the way that it's worded here would be for the mobile, for the construction office, we would want to make sure that the site's cleared, it's ready to go, we cannot deliver this to the property owner. We have no other concerns, and I think that's why this language is in here for the C O issuance. For the real estate office, you're looking at it, it says 30 days after all the units are sold or leased. We could have a C O on that model home where we won't issue it until the office is gone, and now it's a regular home. So I think that's why this language is in here. But we can double check with, we can double check and make sure that the language is correct with regards to allowing somebody enough time to remove the office, to remove a temporary office from a construction site.
Yeah, and that 2C under construction office would also be an issue on any single, if they used a construction office on any single family home development? Because essentially what you're saying is they got to remove it before the first C O is issued on the entire development.
Like if there was 100 units or something?
Yeah, they would probably still want a construction office if there were still units out there.
Yeah, it's a good point.
Well, along those same lines, would there be, I'm assuming there would be, and this may be what you're talking about there. I would assume that there would be some understanding or belief that you're about to get a certificate of occupancy. Because if you're not certain that everything's going to pass and you're going to get that, you remove your construction office. They come in and say, we found 17 problems. Now you got to put an office back to do construction again. So there needs, you know, that's.
Yeah, that's an interesting point. From a planning standpoint, when we're going to do a C O inspection, it's usually landscaping. There might be, I wonder if there are, sometimes there are construction offices, there could be.
I mean, would someone come and say, hey, everything looks good, we're going to issue the certificate. We just want to let you know, you should have it in a couple of weeks. And in the meantime, then they remove their construction office. But I wouldn't think they would leave with no knowledge of if they passed and everything's good to go. And then they remove their office only to find out they're not good to go, is what I'm saying. And it may not ever have come up, but I don't see why it wouldn't come up. That would make me nervous if I were building something to remove my construction office till I 100% knew there was nothing else I was going to have to do here before I got a certificate.
Yeah.
It's been my experience that construction offices are typically used in multifamily, large operation, large developments. They're not typically there for one house, and usually the people who are in that construction office are the people developing that property. So when they pull that trailer, they're going to their next site. They're ready to go. But they don't go until it's complete. So my thought is that there's a little bit of grace there to allow them, let's say a pool tea, for instance, who we have in our community, a little bit of grace to allow them the time to pack all that in, get their next site ready for that trailer. I know occasionally they'll sit there for just a bit, wait for that next site. But when you're that large and your operation is that large, you know, they don't have storage places typically for those. So, you know, they have central sites, but they usually go to the next site. So I don't know where you want to go with that.
No, thank you for the comments. I think what will, maybe it's a matter of having some that they should be removed a certain number of days after a C O issuance, like you were suggesting. That way, we have the language in there and it's a condition, and we can do an inspection at some point.
Whatever reasonable amount of time is that somebody would leave a construct. I mean, anybody that's got a certificate, they want everything out because they want to occupy it. They don't want to construct trailers.
Correct.
They want some reasonable timeframe.
Yeah, I think the idea is to not have a new 7-Eleven with its construction trailer out there for a year. Yeah, I mean, that's really the idea, but like to your point is, they may not, they might want to keep that trailer there until they're finally done. Yeah, that's a good point. This is all really great conversation, by the way. Thank you. This is the stuff that we've been doing every day, you know, as staff, so it's. Appreciate it. This is on the, so going back to the use specific centers, the refuse and recycling containers. Here's some of those use specific standards that staff will be implementing. It's a bit tricky when you have some new commercial projects and they want to put in a trash enclosure adjacent to your front facade. So we've made this language to be so that way, if there is a trash enclosure next to the front facade, that it doesn't compromise the non-residential design standards so that we can still have a nice looking building, allow the opportunity for the containers to be located in a spot that doesn't necessarily impact the project in a negative way. And really, this is new language because we were absent it. We get a lot of questions about these trash enclosures because they're kind of, they're not necessarily the afterthought when you lay out your parking in your new building, but it's something that they think about that comes up.
One question, the requirements to not allowed between a building and a street. If it's a non-residential or commercial building, let's say along 70, and they have a parking lot in the front of the building, but the building rear is to 70, would that still permit them to have trash or recycling in between 70 and their building? Would that be on the rear side? Would that be the appropriate place for it?
It would, this would suggest, this would require them to be on the side or behind the building. So if you're facing Highway 70, you would not be able to put your trash enclosure on 70, is what you're saying.
Yeah, maybe that's not a good example, but if the rear of the building is facing the street, and then the frontage is facing the parking lot, would this prohibit them from putting the the trash in the rear of the building if it's along the street side? That makes sense.
I want to say that it would, yeah, that you wouldn't be able to put your trash enclosure in between. If your building was facing, if your back of your building, so you have like a 10 tenant suite, and all of their exit doors from the back are facing the Highway 70, then this trash enclosure wouldn't be able to be placed in that space between the building and Highway 70.
It would have to be on the side of the.
Correct, or towards the front of the area where the parking area would be. And that I want to say is because we want to, we want to put these types of facilities in an area where you really can't see them, or at least parallel with the facade. They're not something that's put in front of, in the parking area or in landscape areas. These are some changes with regards to right of way. So curbing gutter would be required on private streets in accordance with town policy. To be, may use rolled valley curbing on residential streets at the engineering director's discretion. Driveway access on major roadways would be limited unless authorized by N C D O T. And alternative access driveway to reduce the max number of lots served from five to four. Some clarification regarding the measurement for parking. So you can see there the gross square foot of all principal buildings and secondary buildings is that note number two. And permits driveway parking for townhouse development with rear loaded driveways unless otherwise limited if more than six unit in a town home development. So for signage, we have a Sessions Law update regarding non-conforming signs. We've reduced the height of clearance from nine foot to eight foot for a projecting sign. So this would be a sign that projects into the right of way. Clarifying the sidewalk signs are permitted in the right of way. And a note about internal illumination requiring a building permit. These are some changes to various standards, the lot size to make this consistent with the lot size of duplex, triplex, and quadruplex. Then the R M F zone district. Clarification of cessation versus abandonment and non-conformities. Some language about stormwater. New definitions with regards to development entry point and master plan. And some plat certificates that we look for when we're doing our subdivisions. Procedures. There's a lot, there's a lot in this batch of text amendments. The timing of review for text amendments, so this is, this is really something that I wanted to make sure that we included where persons of the public could submit their own text amendments for the town to consider. So it's not just something that's dependent on staff. We would limit those to considerations for twice yearly. As you can see, text amendments do take a lot of work. We're bringing you three, so any kind of citizen-initiated text amendments would be done at least two times a year if they desire to do so.
One question about resident or, I guess, landowner, does that include developers that are attempting to do projects in Clayton as well?
It could if they had the landowner or a resident of the town to support. So if I had a property and somebody was wanting to do something on my property, I would be the person, just like if I was doing a rezoning, I would have to sign off on it as the property owner. It would be a similar case in this case, so.
And with that, what is the process? I want to be mindful that that is a good initiative, though. You can imagine that there may be residents who just dump a bunch of text amendment ideas into your office. How do y'all go about processing that? Do you have to vet each one and then bring those up for consideration? Is there staff consideration there as well?
I think we would be guiding somebody. When I've done a text amendment that was initiated by a citizen, it was, we had some conversations about what exactly was the language that they wanted to include and to help guide them and for them to set up the process for them. So then they would be acting as an applicant, coming forward to the planning board with their list of recommendations, just like we do, just how staff would be doing. That's the way I would envision that process to pan out.
And is there a fee associated with that?
I want to say that I'd have to look into our fee schedule, but we do have an application type in the U D O. And I want to say that we are creating something for future processing, so I'd have to double check the fee. for, for future processing. So I'd have to double check the fee, but if we don't have a fee, there should be a fee associated with that request.
Yeah, thank you.
Other procedural changes with regards to zoning compliance permit, we've just clarified that changes in utilities, this is something that we would want to capture as a zoning compliance permit. A technical correction, I want to say, was brought up at our last meeting with regards to conventional rezonings that a TIA is not required as part of a conventional zoning request. And this is another big one, I would say, where an application will be considered abandoned if six months pass between a town correspondence and an applicant's response. So if we get a new submittal and we do the TRC review and we've given our comments back and a year passes, an applicant wants to resubmit, we would have considered their application abandoned.
Hey Conrad, I apologize. I want to go back one page and then I have a question about something on this one. Can we go back one? Because I was looking at something that I just noticed. On the must provide access easement, by the way, thank you for putting that in there because developments forget to do that all the time. It should be from adjacent public street.
Gotcha. Let me see that.
Adjacent or nearest public street. Because if you have a, if you have an SCM that's for some reason is not working and the neighborhood comes to the council and says, hey, I would love for you to do this because we don't have the money to do this. And the council says, okay, you still don't have access to it if there's not an access easement to the closest public street.
That's a good point. We'll make sure that clarification comes in. And for some context, this would be a storm control measure that's on us, on a site. We want to make sure that the town can go in there and access that storm control measure and provide any maintenance if it's needed.
And then I have a question about TIA's and this, this came up yesterday at my office. Do we have a time limit on when TIA's are, are, can be still used? Or do we, do they have a, do they have a, a moonlight clause or whatever?
Not that I know of.
We should put one in.
What, what would your recommendation be for the length?
Three years.
Three years?
Yeah. DOT requires coun, council only good for a year. And with the changing conditions in town, if a, if a development sits, and I don't, I can't remember what our, what's our timeframe for allowing, you know, a development or a rezoning, if nothing happens on that site, how long is that good for? What, what is, I don't know that number off the top of my head.
Not, I'm not sure. But to your point, if there's a project submitted and approved, at what point does that expire?
Correct. What does expire? Or, because you could do it one of two ways. You could say the TIA is only good for three years, or you could say when the development plan or the site plan or the rezoning expires. You could do one of the either. The municipalities have done both. But it came up with DOT today because DOT doesn't necessarily have that in any of their requirements. So it'd be good for the town to have something in their requirements.
Yeah, what I'll do is we'll double check our, our UDO, make sure we don't have any of those timeframes and then we can consider that. But that also came up today in a meeting this afternoon.
There you go.
So it's a relevant discussion. Appreciate it. This is agricultural exemptions. Chad really took a proactive approach with regards to bona fide farms and gave us a little bit of language in here. The agricultural and bona fide farmland outside of corporate limits. He's classified this with exempted and not exempted. It's pretty technical and it was one of his proactive choices. It just helps us understand how do we classify a bona fide farm? Because that can impact some land use decisions. That concludes staff's presentation. We do have the UDO. The actual red line changes, if you want to go through any of the pages that we've discussed briefly, the plan is to present this, we'll solicit your recommendation. And there's been some good discussion. We can consider that and have that as part of our presentation to town council on the second of December. And the schedule is to finish this up by the end of the year, which will be our last meeting for town council on the 12 of this year, on the 16th of December. Then revise the UDO and get it published so we can start off 2025 with a brand new updated UDO. Staff's available if you have any questions.
Any questions of staff?
Yeah, I got one. So these revisions will take effect starting January 1st.
I'm sorry, what was it?
So the, these revisions will take effect for anyone applying after January 1st?
No, they, they would be effective at the date of adoption of the public hearing. So we would have this effective on basically if you apply on the 17th of December, you're, they would come into effect on the 17th.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I, I forget what page it was on, but was the, the curb and gutter requirement for private developers not in the UDO before?
I want to say the clarifications for streets, for private streets. There's a clarification on that to make sure that we, we have that for private streets. Can, we can double check that if you like.
It would, it's a, it's a, it's a clarification because what was in the UDO was that public streets need to be built, the private streets need to be built to public street standards. But it was, it was adding in a specification for curb and gutter as well.
Any other questions to staff?
One more question on the very first slide on the resource conservation area section. It's not included in open space. What, what's the justification for not including the resource conservation areas in the open space calculation?
So the question about not having open space be qualified of the RCA, so the areas, I think because we, well, staff felt that we didn't want to just have, wanted to make sure we had some quality open space that wasn't concerned. We wanted to have a distinction between the two.
So with the, and I could look at the, the definition to be more clear for the resource conservation areas, that like the steep slopes and like wetlands, riparian buffer areas. And those would not be included in the open space calculation. So there would need to be over and beyond active or passive open space and developments.
Okay, correct. That's, that is the, the frame that we were thinking of approaching that.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions to staff? Thank you, Conrad. Appreciate it. It does not appear that we have any members of the public here, but for the sake of being legal, are there any public comments? All right, hearing none. I will entertain a motion at this time to either accept the Unified Development Ordinance text amendment or not to the town council. Looking for a motion, one way or the other. All right, we have a motion from board member Bland.
Make a motion to recommend approval of United Unified Development Ordinance text amendments based on consistency with the adopted 2045 Comprehensive Growth Plan. In that goal, LU1 seeks to preserve Clayton's character while allowing for growth and development in appropriate areas. Policy LU 1.1 manages future growth and encourage quality development through the implementation of the comprehensive plan. Unified Development Ordinance, UDO and other plans, regulations adopted by the town council. Strategy LU 1.1.3 reviews and updates the Unified Development Ordinance within one to two years to ensure consistency with the goals, policies and strategies of the Comprehensive Growth Plan. This action is reasonable and in the public interest in that the 2045 Comprehensive Growth Plan encourages an up-to-date Unified Development Ordinance. The request is compatible with providing a relevant and community reflective land use regulatory framework.
All right, we have a motion from board member Bland. Do we have a second?
I'll second it, but I have a question too. Because we had some additions, so we just want to make sure those are included in the changes. Or how do we handle that, Conrad?
What, what I'd like to do is to have those comments just presented to council at the work session for their consideration, rather than having a motion that has these as, unless the board chooses to have these included as specific items in the motion. But I think we, I've, we've taken, I've taken some notes. We'll have the minutes. We can kind of just have that discussion with council when we meet with them.
Okay, then I'll second.
I have a second from board member Saraski. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, that passes. Next on our list is new business. Looks like the 2025 planning board meeting scheduled for minor revisions regarding the, we'll hear from staff.
All right. Thank you, Chair Dupree. In my haste to be ahead of the game here, I've given you this, these dates and to my, what is it called? When, when you find out that you've been having the wrong dates. So this is the, thank you, Mr. Chair, Chair, Members Saraski for helping point out some of these dates. I went ahead and just clarified these dates, got them corrected, accounted for some changes in councils' agendas also for 25. So this is just the revised schedule for 2025 to account for those corrections.
Nothing to vote on. Any comments regarding this? All right. Thank you much. Next item on the agenda, item six informal. I don't think we do.
Yes, if we can have the board just make a motion.
Do we have a motion to accept the, the revisions?
Motion to accept the 2025 planning board meeting schedule, minor revisions.
Have a, a motion from board member Applewhite. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second. Board member Gleason, all in favor, say aye. All right. Any opposed? Okay, passes. Next, uh, next on the agenda, item six informal discussion and public comment. Is there any informal discussion or public comment? Does not appear that there is, in which case I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to adjourn.
All right, we have a motion. Board member Bland, I have a second. Board member Applewhite, all in favor, say aye. We are adjourned.